Thanks. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Meeting of North Penn School Board of Directors, and I think we will go first to our news update.
You're also welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Christina Stedham. Superintendent Dr. Kurt Dietrich and his administrative team held a community forum discussing assessments of the North Penn School District. After an overview of what assessments are currently in place and how they are utilized in the North Penn School District, audience members had the opportunity to ask questions regarding Keystone and PSSA exams. If you missed the presentation, you can watch it online at youtube.com/MPTV. The Academic Decathlon Team won the state championship for the second year in a row. With the theme of World War I in mind, the North Penn Team was tested in many different ways. After winning the SuperQuiz Oral Relight, North Penn was named the winner of the Pennsylvania Academic Decathlon and will be traveling to Honolulu, Hawaii in the spring. Congratulations on this impressive accomplishment. Pembroke Middle School and local law enforcement held an augmented intruder drill last week. Families were notified about the drill that included Upper Gwinnett, Montgomery, and North Wales Police Departments. The officers simulated a lockdown of the building due to an intruder and a partial evacuation of the building. Students and staff typically practice lockdown procedures, so the drill added the need to follow police instructions after the initial lockdown. Officers simulated clearing the building and evacuating part of the building.
Basically, what we had was an all-intruder drill in which if a subject came in, or even a natural disaster, or there was a gas explosion, that the police could respond, emergency personnel could respond, coordinate with school personnel, and evacuate the children effectively.
We just want the staff to be ready for something like this. Unfortunately, this is, you know, this is happening all over the country, and we want to make sure the North Penn School District is ready and is ready to work with the police departments in these incidents.
North Penn School District continues to drill for all types of emergencies in coordination with local police, fire, and first responders. The North Penn High School stage was alive with activity this past month. The family and consumer science classes sashayed down the runway in the annual fashion show. This year's theme, "The Beatles," reflected the passions of the day of the Fab Four. Then, fourteen selected talented acts took to the stage in the annual SGA Talent Show. This year's winning group, White Noise, was selected by judges and an interactive audience vote. The second-grade students at Inglewood Elementary School brought American history to life at their living museum. Each student researched and then portrayed a famous American of their choice through costumes and presentations. The museum visitors stopped and listened to each person's story in American history. And finally, get your tickets now for this year's North Penn Theaters production of Disney's Beauty and the Beast. Show dates are Thursday through Sunday, May 1st through the 4th. And new this year, you can easily purchase your tickets in advance online at the address on your screen. Ticket prices are at $10 for adults and $5 for students, with a minimal processing fee online only. That's it for this North Penn News Update. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly-scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens Log Book. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Now, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess you all change it up every now and then, just to keep us on our toes, right? Welcome, everyone. Mr. Shapinski couldn't make it tonight, so I get to fill in those large shoes, but... Our Academic Decathlons, that's two years in a row, right?
It is two years in a row state champions, and they are competing with your approval. Will be traveling to Honolulu, Hawaii for Nationals.
Do we...do they need to take a vice president of the school board?
We can look into that.
You gonna look into that? You already asked that, didn't you? Oh, man. I did live there for two years. Son was born there.
Oh, I see.
Local Kamai. Okay, well, before we begin the meeting, or I guess we have officially begun the meeting, but one of those special times, we will recognize some students, and these students are members of the thespian troupe. And I guess we'll let Dr. Dietrich start us off.
Yes, we'll have Andrew Roni please come to the microphone and introduce our students to be recognized for their accomplishments in conjunction with the North Penn High School thespian troupe.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Dietrich. Mr. Kerr, the Board of School Directors, and the council, thank you very much for having us here tonight and for honoring these young people and their accomplishments. We've had a busy year with North Penn High School Theater and thespians. In the fall, we traveled to the Pennsylvania State thespian Conference, as we always do. And two of our students being honored tonight competed in individual events in the solo musical category, and both of them won superior ratings and the opportunity to compete at the International thespian Festival in Nebraska in June. We also had a, just last Saturday, actually, at the Pennsylvania Shakespeare Festival at DeSales University in your neck of the woods, Dr. Dietrich. We participated in their high school competition. It's the sixth annual. And for the sixth time, we came in one of the top three schools. And what was very exciting about it this year is we only had two contestants, both of who are here tonight. Nathan Borzillo, who took a first-place trophy and also won a very nice scholarship to DeSales University, performing in Fine Arts Department, and Alex Breth. And both were asked to showcase their work at the workshop at the end of the day. And with only two people in our team, they do a collective score for the top-team trophy. And with two people, we brought home the second-place trophy, so we were very excited about that. Also this year was the fifteenth anniversary of the Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS fundraising event, originally called the Gala, when it was first put together fifteen years ago. And now, we call it the Night of the Arts, because it not only celebrates theater performances, but we also had live artists from our art club in the glass concourse demonstrating their work and doing some portrait painting. We had a coffee house going on in the lobby. We had a huge attendance, and we raised quite a butt of money, over $25,000, $2,500 on that particular evening. And that night, Joe Norton, who is now the Director of Education at Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS in New York, came and spoke, as he has on to most of our galas. He got the original phone call from North Penn High School, asking if they could do a fundraising gala fifteen years ago. And he was just working in the office at that point, and he is now Director of Education and works with thespian troupes across the country. And because of North Penn High School's first gala, thespian troupes across the country have raised well over a million dollars for Broadway Cares, and it all started in our high school auditorium. And so, Joe came along with a very lovely crystal trophy from the Board of Directors of a BCFA. And in April, in their national newsletter, there's going to be a very nice article about North Penn, which we will be sharing with you and our thespian troupe. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce some of these young people, or all of them, actually. Nathan Borzillo, a senior, competed at the Pennsylvania Shakespeare Festival High School Competition. He won the first-place trophy in monologues. He also brought our team to a second-place trophy overall team, and he won a lovely scholarship to DeSales University. Nathan Borzillo.
Come on, Nathan. Well done. Thank you, Nathan. Congratulations, too.
Alex Breth, also a senior, also competed at the Pennsylvania State, Pennsylvania Shakespeare Festival. Gets a little confusing, all these Pennsylvanians. Anyway, and he helped bring home the second-place trophy, which he carries proudly. Alex Breth.
Good job. That's good. Great job.
Congratulations, Stephen.
Nicole Mitchell, also a senior, was one of our two co-coordinators for our BCEFA fundraising this year, doing special fundraising at our state conference at the high school and also with the BCEFA Night of the Arts. And she and Taryn, who's right behind her, put together probably one of the best BCFAs I saw as a parent when my students were, my sons were there, or since I've been there as Director of our thespian troupe. We were very proud of their work this year. So, Nicole Mitchell.
Congratulations, Nicole. Nicole, congratulations, Stephen.
Taryn Murphy was Nicole's co-coordinator, also helping with all the fundraising this year and with the marvelous Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS Night of the Arts. Thank you, Taryn.
Congratulations, Taryn. Thanks. Congratulations, Stephen.
Rebecca Rosenblatt is our President of our thespian troupe. She was supposed to be with us tonight, but had, it turns out, had a prior engagement. She accepted the trophy on behalf of our troupe for Broadway Cares and was instrumental in that. I should also mention, she won the rope-tying contest at the Pennsylvania State thespian Conference. And if you happen to catch any of the video of the upcoming senior prom, she's probably done most of the braiding of the hair of the girls in that video, so... But Becca cannot be with us here tonight. Juliet Chip competed at the Pennsylvania State thespian Conference, also in the solo musical category, also came home with a superior rating. And I would like to say that her CD conked out in the middle of the competition, and she went on a cappella and blew them out of the room. So, thank you very much, Juliet.
Good. You didn't need it anyhow. No backing for you. Congratulations.
That's a great story. Congratulations, too.
Jackson Simpson is a junior. Jackson ran in the elections for the Student State Board out at the thespian conference. This is the first time the state board was elected by the students, by their peers. We changed it this year, the adult board. And Jackson won, and won as one of the delegates, and he will be helping, going with me in April, down to Central York High School to begin planning next year's thespian conference. So, Jackson Simpson.
Well done, Jackson. Thank you, Karen.
Well done. Nice tie.
And finally, Kuhu Verma is a senior. She competed in the song category as well and won a first-place superlative rating out at the thespian state conference. And as a quick plug, she will be appearing as Belle in Beauty and the Beast, so Kuhu Verma.
Well done. Thanks.
Thank you very much for inviting us tonight and for honoring these students and all students here.
Ladies and gentlemen, come around. Thank you very much. Come around, and everybody would like to shake your hand.
There you go. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go. Thanks. Congratulations. Congratulations again. Thank you. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Thank you. Thank you. You're always so very successful, these students.
We enjoy it. We have wonderful students.
We also have wonderful folks that mentor them. We appreciate it. Yes, thank you all. Big round of applause.
Just reflects the broad spectrum of education, you know? Arts, academic decathlon, sports. It's, we're very proud of all these students, certainly all the teachers and mentors that go into making them even better.
And we will have a rebroadcast of this on Friday, March 21st, at 7:30. Monday, March 24th, at 12:30 and 7:30. Tuesday, March 25th, at 12:30 and 7:30. And Wednesday, March 26th, that's 12:30. Catch it on Comcast Cable 28 or Verizon FiOS 29.
Good. You're a good job. I usually have to prompt Shapinski, so I wasn't set for that, but...
If I could just add to that, today, literally today, they got the equipment for Comcast 28, will have the closed captions. They were expecting Verizon Channel 29, but some equipment blew up, so it'll be in tomorrow. So, tomorrow, we should have closed captions for Verizon, for those who can't hear. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. O'Donnell. It is that time, audience and citizens, whoever wants to share comments and thoughts with us, now's your time. Please come up to the podium and name and address, I think you have to write down, and talk to us.
Yeah, my name's Ed Madge. I reside at 424 Bonnie Lane. I'm sure some of you have seen me up here before. Usually, I just come in and try to just put in a little plug for somebody, or just put some food for thought when I say something small. The reason I'm here tonight is I know you are going to be voting on a contract for the Transpar Group, which is currently doing the operations management of our Transportation Department. Being a bus driver, I can give you a little bit of insight. Sometimes you may not be aware of it. I did look through the contract very quickly, and I did notice that finally, you're actually going for a little bit longer extended period of time, going to three years instead of the year, which I congratulate whoever thought of doing it that way, that will give our organization a little bit of continuity. There's nothing worse than constant flux in an organization as far as leadership, to keep the employees disgruntled, befuddled, or what have you. Transportation is a very large organization in this department, or in this district. We're all here for the same purpose, and that is to prepare students for the real world, to educate them, both through academics, through athletics, what have you. And it's obviously, we've done a pretty good job in this district over my forty years of living in this area. But the one thing I would like to recommend, or put some food out for thought, is if you do vote on this contract and you do extend the contract for Transpar for another three years, that we look at being a little more, giving them a little more, I guess, empowerment, I guess I could say. Because quite often, us as the drivers feel that there's sometimes, we hear one thing from one group, but then the district may have a different thought on what Transpar's recommendations are. And I think that maybe had a little work that could be improved to make it so that maybe giving empowerment to Mr. Geiger and his organization to make some critical decisions, since we are paying them to make decisions for transportation. We're accepting their expertise, and when they come to a conclusion based on their observations, we may want to take it a little more under consideration than maybe we have in the past. That's all I'd like to have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We value your thoughts, comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. Let's see. Recommend approval of minutes from the February 20th, 2014 action meeting as circulated.
I have comments, small.
Comment on the minutes?
Should I wait?
The minutes?
Yeah, let's wait. We've got a motion, Mr. Schilling, second.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
Second, Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions on the meeting minutes?
I noticed on the minutes that the Audience of Citizen was before the proclamations, and that wasn't the case. It's a minor technical, and just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you. All approved? All in favor? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Committee reports, Support Services, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kerr. The Support Service Committee has not met since the last board meeting, but our next meeting will be scheduled for Monday, March 31st, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Educational Service Center. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. I don't know if anybody has comments or questions to that, but you're certainly welcome. But, okay. Next is Education Community Policy Committee.
That's mine. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. The ECP Committee met on Monday, March 10th. Several textbook adoptions were presented to the committee, scheduled for implementation in 2014-15. The proposed textbook adoptions include the Go Math program for grades four through six, a text for the new seventh-grade reading course, and texts for calculus, statistics, pre-algebra, high school science electives, and French II courses. Also, the special education component of the comprehensive plan was presented to the committee. The plan is required of school districts by the state to demonstrate compliance with applicable federal and state laws. It will also be presented to the full board at the April 1st board meeting, or work session. Upon approval of this plan, upon approval, this plan will become effective on July 1st, 2014, and continue through June 30th, 2017. The committee agreed to move this forward for a 28-day public review and comment period. The committee received an advertising update as well. Kinder Care is a new patron that will utilize the school district website to advertise their summer camp program. Additional opportunities for business to advertise will include the televised prom show, a QR code, and an interactive coupon link on the district website. The next ECP committee meeting will be Monday, April 10th, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you. I just wanted to say the textbooks are out for review, for any parent or anybody that wants to review the textbooks. And also, that the special ed component that was presented to us was very eye-opening, and just what a wonderful job the special ed people do in this community and for this school. So, I'm looking forward to them presenting it to the board in April, and that would be a nice time for people to come out and see what the special ed program's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Leonard, ECP? Mrs. Murphy, Foundation. How's the Foundation doing this day?
Thank you. We're doing very well. Thank you. The Foundation met at its monthly meeting last week, 7:30 in the morning, at which time our student representatives, Taylor Young and Aaron Hubner, joined us for the first time. It was a great receiving input from them about our programs and fundraising efforts. We look forward to working with them on all of these endeavors, and it makes a huge difference to have another point of view. It really does. On March 8th, we held our charity luncheon at Bonefish Grill for the first time. I must say, this has been one of our best luncheons in years. They sold out the event and brought in approximately $2,500 for the Foundation. I can't say enough about the high quality of food and service we received from Bonefish and its manager, Paul Friedman. A big thank you goes to his entire staff for making it such a wonderful event. We are currently looking into planning a fundraising event for the end of April into the beginning of May. This May Day event, SOS, we need you, it's May Day, will be an online auction of North Penn experiences. More details will be forthcoming on this exciting and new endeavor. In the next week or so, North Penn staff will receive an invitation to submit proposals for innovative projects for the 2014-2015 school year. We look forward to considering their ideas for the next semester. The North Penn Alumni Association coordinated a program at the North Penn High School Career Fair this month that included alumnus from various professions. At times, each alumnus had a line of interested students and parents waiting to speak to them about their chosen field. Thank you to NPHS alumni who donated their time and expertise to be at the event. The Foundation is currently busy planning, of course, as always, the Golf Classic, which will be held on Monday, 18th, at Pinecrest Golf Course. And just, I'm not even, maybe Dr. Dietrich already knows this, but our Foundation just received several awards. Did you know that? It's one of the first times. It's wonderful. The Office of School and Community Engagement, we received good news from the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association. We have earned five awards, five, you know? It's just, it's really just so exciting. Excellence in Education Communication Contest. It's unbelievable, in every area, we won. Highlighted below, you will see that MP School District Educational Foundation, which is also the, not just the Communications Department, but also the Foundation, won an award for the end-of-the-year appeal, the apple-themed mailing that featured one of our ESL classes, Marilyn Lefler, earned an award of honor. Congratulations to Matty Bergman, Aaron Crew, who created this wonderful piece that not only looked good and read well, but brought in the funds. So, we have to just salute our community ed department this evening, obviously, Matty, Christine, and Aaron, and of course, we have Carol Fink, too, who is also very active in the Foundation. So, thank you all.
Are you here tonight? Is that...
Yes, Matty's there. Come on, Matty.
Put the camera on him. Go ahead. Turn it around.
He's also in the Swedish Pool Room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assumed that was August 18th.
Yes, August 18th. Yeah, what did I say?
I don't know.
Oh, August, I'm sorry, August.
Just wanted to clarify. Any comments, questions for Mrs. Murphy?
Thank you. Where are we at? Finance. Who has finance tonight? Is that Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, finance report for Thursday, March 20th, 2014. Every month, we always look at our informational items. We have about ten or eleven reports we look at. Mr. Schock went all through those reports. They're all looking fine. Our earned income tax and transfer tax, Mr. Schock noted that we're a little bit ahead of schedule by 4.16 percent compared to last year. That's a good thing. Tonight, we also have our monthly budget transfers. That's on the agenda for tonight. And under other business, last month during our meeting, Bob, also, Mr. Schock also distributed a budget progress report highlighting significant changes and progress of the past month. He also presented an estimate of the Act One Base Index for future years by the Pennsylvania Independent Fiscal Office and a PowerPoint on the government's budget proposal. Our next meeting will be Monday, March 31st, at 6:30 p.m. End of report.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions, comments for finance this evening? Good. Okay. Safe schools, Frank?
It's I.
New chairperson.
Oh, okay. Great.
All right. So, this is, we have had a lot of activity in safe schools in the last week. Mr. Wilson detailed the emergency procedures book that was updated, and the revised books that will be distributed to all the faculty. Updates will be made continually. He also indicated that he has had meetings with county officials and police departments to discuss the all-hazards plan for each school. Mr. Wilson explained that an all-hazards plan is specific to each individual building and is crucial, because every building has different circumstances that must be considered in the event of an extreme emergency. Mr. Wilson shared the evacuation training and drills will be held more frequently in the future, and we do know that we have, obviously, we have a lot of fire drills and not many fires, so we really need to have more of this type of drill, so that we're really ready. He shared that there will be a combined intruder evacuation simulation drill held at Pembroke on Friday, March 14th, and board members are welcome to participate in the drill. We all did. Your entire Safe Schools Committee was there, and it went very well. And, but we see that we need to do it often. I mean, every time you do something, you learn something. Mr. Wilson shared the secondary schools have two class buttons in each school office, and the elementary schools have one class button in the office. He shared that the county is upgrading the class button system in the near future, and he will follow up regarding acquiring additional buttons. He does not want to order an outdated version of the buttons. Mr. Wilson also confirmed that class signs are posted at every building. Mr. Strobel reported that the high school cameras are running well. He also shared that the new camera wiring is completed at Pendale. The sixty new cameras are being mounted, and we are waiting for a router. The Pendale cameras will provide building-wide coverage. The vendor submitted a proposal for Pembroke and will be submitting a proposal for the Penfield Project. New camera monitors are on order for the elementary schools. Installation is continual and will be a main focus in the short term. If you remember, a year ago, we decided that we were going to order a lot of new cameras to help with our safety. Mr. Strobel also informed the committee of the NPHS Security Fencing Project schedule. The project began on March 18th, which was obviously just this week. Mr. Strobel reviewed drawings of proposed lobby renovations for Gwinore, Rital Path, Gwinnett Square, Knapp, Oak Park, and Walton Farm Elementary Schools. These renovations would focus on safe entrances at all the schools. Carolyn Murphy suggested that the plans be reviewed by the entire board for discussion and approval, as she felt it important that the board have a full understanding of the renovations. The plans are proposed to be reviewed by the Support Services Committee and at the next work session of the board. The Pembroke sidewalk icing issue was discussed, and solutions were discussed. And for any parents that might be listening that were at our Safe Schools meeting, the district is working on this. The committee decided that Safe School Committee would plan to meet the first Tuesday of every other month unless there are other urgent issues needing the additional meetings. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, April 29th, at 6:30 p.m. at the ESC. And I'm going to acquiesce to Mr. O'Donnell, who's going to add to this report.
Thank you, Karen. Ms. Murphy. Several months ago, Vince had asked me to get a summary, and actually, I forgot about it, and Vince got it, basically a summary of what we've accomplished in the past fourteen months. And some of it may be a little bit redundant for what Mrs. Murphy just said, but I just want everybody to know, especially the parents at home, to know how serious we take this board and administration, how serious we take safe schools. You know, we're doing everything imaginable, and if we can get it done, we're getting it done. But I just want to run through a list of things that we've done in the past fourteen, fifteen months. All of our cameras, we've replaced all the cameras at the high school, which you've heard about that. All of our base radios in our buses in all the schools, the SSC and Transportation. We have a fantastic employee, Chris Duer. I understand he's done that all by himself. All of our portable radios have been replaced in all 21 buildings. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, April 29th at 6:30 PM at the ESC. And I'm going to acquiesce to Mr. O'Donnell, who's going to add to this report.
Thank you, Karen. Ms. Murphy. Several months ago, Vince had asked me to get a summary, and actually, I forgot about it, and Vince got it, basically a summary of what we've accomplished in the past 14 months. And some of it may be a little bit redundant for what Mrs. Murphy just said, but I just want everybody to know, especially the parents at home, to know how serious we take this board and the administration, how serious we take Safe Schools. You know, we're doing everything imaginable, and if we can get it done, we're getting it done. But I just want to run through a list of things that we've done in the past 14, 15 months. All of our cameras, we've replaced all the cameras at the high school, which you've heard about that. All of our base radios in our buses in all the schools, the SSC and transportation. We have a fantastic employee, Chris Duer. I understand he's done that all by himself. Our, all of our portable radios have been replaced in all 21 buildings. Our proximity card system proposals have been done. The elementary schools, Pendale, they've all been done. All the schools have the buzzing system, which is new a couple months ago. We have the extended school care doorbell buzzing proposals. That's been implemented. All the elementary schools have, rather, all the schools have our raptor system. Ray Wilson, our coordinator of safety, has been making sure of all of our NIMs training is being done with the administration. You heard about the Pendale camera proposal. I believe the wiring's this week, and the cameras are being installed this week. Mr. Wilson also got additional class buttons. And just so you know, the class buttons, if you're not familiar with it, is if something routine happens, somebody on the school will call the local police department, and the cops will come out. But if they press that class button, it contacts the county. The county then contacts the local police department, but what it also does is contacts the local SWAT team, and they will show up. So, and now we have more buttons, as you heard. Some schools have two, maybe three, which is a good thing. You heard about our, previously about our fencing progress, the security fencing at the high school, which should be, John Strobel told us the other day, should be completed by June 6th. You heard about the Pembroke and Penfield cameras. That should be done soon. Oh, and I don't know, Carolyn, I don't know if you mentioned all the, all the large monitors. Now, all the schools will have the 42-inch monitors. They're in, they've been in for a couple weeks, and I think within the next couple weeks, they should all, they should all be in, so the office staff can see what's going on with all the cameras now. All the class buttons, the signs, if you notice, are now outside or the second set of doors, so anybody coming in, they can see that the buildings are protected by, protected by these buttons. And lastly, which is, which is a great thing, which we, it's been taking a little while to get that, get at, but the lobbies of Bridle Path, Gwinore, Gwinnett Square, Knapp, Oak Park, and Walton Farm, so we can have a second set of doors to stop somebody from getting in a little bit further. And I'm hoping that maybe that can be done by September, I'm guessing. Would you think that might be a good goal, September? Okay. Okay. But I guess, I just wanted people at home to know that we take this, this is a lot of work, an awful lot of work. And I really commend Dr. Dietrich for this, John Strobel and Ray Wilson for doing all this. It's just a lot of work, but it's been needed, it's necessary to make, to make our kids safe. That's all. Thank you.
Double team on that report. Thank you both. Ms. Murphy, I guess you made a cameo appearance on the news update. Were you an intruder at this?
Susan was there.
Susan was there?
We were all here.
Okay, good.
We were all there.
She was much more part of the effort than I am.
I know.
Okay. Comments, questions for Safe Schools this evening? No? All right. What do we have next? Personnel? That happens to be me. Personnel Committee met in executive session on March 4th from 5:00 to 6:00 to discuss matters of personnel and negotiations and potential litigation. You can ask me a question, but as you know, I can't answer it, so, but. The, oh, also, let me report, the Board met in executive session, that was Tuesday, the 18th of this month, for negotiation purposes. And North Monco. Steve, you want to do that one? We both attended that Monday, but...
Seeing that that meeting was all of 17 minutes, I'd be happy to give that report.
Okay.
Yes, our meeting was Monday night, and it was actually a very short agenda this month. However, one of the items that was discussed is that the administration and the superintendents are refining the budget numbers. So, it's anticipated, I believe, that in April, we're going to get the preliminary budget, right, Kurt? So, when we get the preliminary budget numbers in, then we'll have more to bring back to the board and to talk about, but for this month, it was a relatively short agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Lattick. Any comments or questions for VOTEC? All right. Last, I guess, but not least, is the intermediate unit. Ms. Murphy?
The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit met on Wednesday, February 26th at 7:00. The new MC IU board members were introduced, and the 25-year-old employees, 25-year employees received their awards. Stan Whistler announced that we had 32 bids for the renovation of our new property, and I have those bids if anyone on this board is interested in seeing them. There were nine general construction, for general construction, 12 for mechanical construction, four electrical construction, and seven plumbing construction. The IU is currently preparing to remodel their newly acquired property at 2 West Lafayette Street. The IU held a reception this afternoon. Here's my hat. To celebrate the beginning of the renovations of the building. And I'm not going to tell you why I got this, but some people might know. Also, a search is being conducted to find a new executive director. Dr. Shively's term ends on June 30th. And there were probably maybe 150 people there this afternoon, including the commissioners, and the building is right downtown Norristown, and it's in the center of what's going to be hopefully the rejuvenation, and I think it's going to be a wonderful sight, and everyone is very happy. If you know the IU isn't bad, we really need a new building. So, I'm looking forward to lots of new things happening with the Montgomery County IU. The MC IU is also making plans for its legislative breakfast to be held at the William Penn Inn on Friday, March 28th. Many of our area legislators will be there, and it's always a really nice morning. Negotiations have begun for our, we are also negotiating with our teacher contract, and Jack Hurd is leading that initiative. The next MC IU board meeting is at 7:00 on March 26th. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any comments or questions for IU report? Okay. Dr. Dietrich, super test report.
I recommend approval of the extension of the Transpar contract through the 2014-15, 15-16, and 16-17 fiscal years at a cost of $150,000 per year for transportation management services, plus $1,200 per month for the use of the TransFinder software, per item 12-14 A through G.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lattick, second by Mr. Schilling. My comment, thank you very much. Bridle Path Home and School, wow.
Yeah, I want to say thank you.
Everybody, honestly, thank you to everybody, too. Ex-Trainings Club.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes. Comments, questions beyond that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of personnel items listed A through C.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by, second by Mrs. Murphy. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of bids per item BA 4, A through B, as listed.
Oh, you skipped one there.
I got it out of order.
Okay. You're testing me again. Somebody's testing me. All right. That's C, under the donations. Do we have a motion?
You did. You have a motion.
All right. Who, I'm sorry. All right. Who made the motion? I apologize. Mr. Schilling? Okay. Second, Ms. Leonard, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA 7.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
Can I carry the bags?
This is the Honolito trip? Well, I know. This is the academic decathlon. That's fantastic. Best of luck. We wish you the best of luck, and they don't need a whole lot of luck, because they're good.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA 8, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the alternative placements per item BA 9, copies of which are on file in the Office of the Director of Special Education.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mrs. Murphy. We're struggling to get that second tonight here? Comments, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Finance report, Mr. Schach.
Yes, this is the financial report for the month of February 2014. Cash receipts during the month of February totaled $6,404,711.77. Cash dispersments for February totaled $23,620,408, leaving total funds available of $113,316,291.37. That's the end of the report.
Sanction and approval, then?
Recommend approval of dispersments to be sanctioned for the month of February 2014 in the amount of $23,938,571.44, and dispersments to be approved for the month of March 2014 in the amount of $2,050,323.95.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions?
I have a question. There, on the sanctions, there's general fund void checks of $35,000. Do you know what that is?
I'm sorry, can you say that?
Which page are you looking at?
I made a copy of it. There are void checks for $35,000.
Okay. We'll respond to you in writing on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the January 2014 budget transfers in the amount of $525,538.81 per item BA 10.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling, excuse me. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other business?
I did want to note that the retirements, Mrs. Cardamoon and Mr. Schach are listed, and I just want to say thank you for all their work and efforts in our community.
Yeah, I agree with that also.
Yeah, but you're not going anywhere just yet, right? All right.